And as we call the meeting to order, we will begin with public comment period. If anybody is signed up for public comment, which I believe nobody is. Okay, so we have no public comment, no board responses. Moving right along, we can address and hear from our student reps. Welcome.
All right, something that I'm going to talk about, two things. The first one is internet issues at LACS specifically. I can't speak for other schools. At ACS, it's really bad. Students with and without ICSD issue Chromebooks or everything, problems with the internet. You can't open Canvas. And I mean, it's required for all classes to have a Canvas page, and when you can't open it, there's an obvious problem. You know, classes are dependent on the internet. I personally have had trouble printing documents because the internet is so terrible. And just doing your daily tasks. Yeah, I mean, this is a, this is really, you know, a sinkhole in the road of education, if you will. Another thing that students are facing is a number of websites that shouldn't be blocked are blocked because of this new system that ICSD is using. You know, it's one thing if you block, you know, a blog or nonsense like that. But examples include some students have a google.com blocked, so they can open their Gmail, Google Docs, or any of the suites. Students can open NBC or CBS News, which unlike, you know, some other publications out there is relatively non-biased. And when you have an assignment for a teacher and they need you to give a reputable source, often they turn to these two sources, and when you can access them, there's a real problem. Yeah, and then on top of all that, there's just really long load times. You know, I personally waited three to four minutes to get Canvas to open. And when your teacher gives you 10 minutes to do something, you can't wait four minutes. On a more positive note, this Thursday, ACS will host a reformatted open house. As part of the open house, caregivers, parents, families, et cetera, will be invited to learn about student leadership initiatives and student government. On top of all that, the same community members will have the opportunity to learn about PVE, which is Promotion by Exhibition for Middle School Students and GVE, Graduation by Exhibition for High School Students, as well as our School Democracy and PBATS, which are Performance-Based Assessment Tasks, which take the place of Regents. And really, the general goal is for parents, caregivers, and our just community members to get an idea of what the school looks like in and outside of the classroom. So I'll turn to Emily.
What time is that, Brandon? The open house?
Five forty-five.
Hi, today we mourned beloved pieces of LACS history being painted over downstairs. These are murals that have been around for decades and just recently deemed unsafe due to newer fire code regulations. I, I love that our school is full of color and stories from students in the past. So rest in peace downstairs door murals and a shout out to all the other pre-existing non-conformities that decorate our walls. Buses still an issue. I arrived 17 minutes late to school today with 15 other students and decided to start recording data from the last morning bus whenever I'm on it. I guess that's my stats classes influence. So I'll try to get that to anyone interested when I have enough to show anything. I'd also love to be in touch with someone who has any kind of influence over morning busing to try and understand the issue better and work on solutions from the ground, I guess. Thanks.
Hello, everybody. So I'm going to start with listing off a bunch of records really fast. Fall season sports off to an excellent start. All right, here we go. Boys varsity soccer, nine, one and one. Boys JV soccer, ten and zero. Boys, girls varsity soccer, seven, oh, and two. Girls varsity tennis, eleven and one. Stacks semifinals Wednesday on the ninth at Binghamton. Girls varsity volleyball, seven and one. Boys varsity golf, five and five. Cross country, lots for this. Corning relays, Riley Hubert first for boys. Sadiya Berkovitz first for girls. Ithaca wins both the boys and girls. Team meet, WeGo Dash in the dark. Riley Hubert's first, Noah Hillker second, Evershaw third, Sadiya Berkovitz first, and Avery Whitker second. Balden's Will invite. Sadia Berkovitz sets a new record. She's now the number one ranked female cross-country runner in the state. Noah Hillker first and Riley Hubert second, leading boys to another first-place finish. Riley's also now number one in the state. McQuade invite. Riley ran the fastest. Ithaca boys finished second in a tight race. And Sadiya Berkovitz ran again the fastest time of all the girls, leading her team to a 12th place finish. View. That's sports stuff.
The board, the board reps, the four of us, unfortunately Jing and Georgina are out sick today, but we started a monthly newsletter, so we send out like a monthly email to all the students about everything we've talked about on that board meetings and beyond for more clear and transparent communication. And so the first newsletter we sent out last, around last week for the end of September. And we have a lot of students reaching out for positive feedback and questions. So it's, it's off to a great start, and we hope to continue this throughout the whole year. We also have an open house this Thursday, and we have like a club fair and admin meet and greet, as well as just a run-through of the student schedules. And it's all happening between 5:30 and 7:30. It's Mental Health Awareness Week, which started on the fifth, will end on the 12th. And one thing we did to kick it off was last week, October 2nd, there were scholar athletes and athletic directors from Union Endicott, Vestal, and Ithaca. And we met for a presentation called Ending the Silence, put on by National Alliance on Mental Health and Huddled Together for Mental Health. And it was a presentation about ending stigma surrounding mental health and talking about mental health as well. The process for students to apply for the New York Seal of Literacy is just getting started. We have an information meeting coming up on October 17th. Last year, we had 34 seniors who earned the seal, so we're hoping to see as much or more interest this year as well. The IHS Collage Concert is on October 30th at 7:30 in Culp Auditorium. It's where nearly 350 students involved in the band, orchestra, and choir will be performing, including a combined piece where students will come together to perform the iconic 1982 hit, Thriller. And some things we talked about Ms. Hardisty, obviously the first thing had to be bathrooms. And previously, we had the issue of all bathrooms being occupied and students taking over 10 minutes to find a stall, which can, which, you know, ate into class time. And however, recently, students have been finding the problem of all the bathrooms locked for repair. Being, the problem being that vapes and the lunch plates and the utensils have all been flushed down the toilets. And so we heard about a toilet that could be broken open just this past week. So last year, we discussed a solution of too much congregation in the bathrooms by cutting off a few inches to the bathroom doors. But we found out that that's not possible because of safety code and the way the doors are built. So we talked about the possibility of getting motion detectors to tell if somebody's in there, possibly how many people, but we might not be able to do so with the money it takes and the time. And we will also try to get some new signage in our bathrooms about not flushing inappropriate stuff down our toilets. So far, we have a suggestion from Ms. Hardisty, flush your habit, not your vape.
One more quick thing on the bathrooms. I think there's a lot of frustration amongst the student body about this because the vast majority of the student body is not shoving vapes down toilets, and it really only takes a couple of bad eggs to ruin the entire scene for everybody. So we're trying to think about ways to possibly help aid the, help solve the problem by limiting the amount of time students can spend in stalls. Because ultimately, we can't really change student behavior enough to prevent one or two kids from putting things where they're not supposed to. But maybe we can change expectations about how often people are going to the restroom, how much time they're spending there, which might be able to open up more opportunity for circulation of students. One such idea that's currently being pursued is maybe inserting a grate into the door so that, you know, admin could at least see people's feet if absolutely necessary, if they've been in there for forever, and there's obviously multiple kids in there. In other news, on a follow-up on getting a tour around the cafeteria facilities, we've talked with Ms. Hardisty again, and she's set up that opportunity for us. So we're going to be taking a video tour of the cafeteria facilities and sending it out to the school population to assure people that the new reusable plates and utensils are being treated with the utmost caution and care while being cleaned, so that, you know, we're not getting dirt or other debris on them, which was a chief concern for the student bodies. We wanted to alleviate that by showcasing the power of the high-strength industrial dishwashers, et cetera, which are being utilized by our cafeteria staff. And on recycling, we are currently planning a meeting with Ms. Hardisty and Dr. Bryman about pursuing paper-based recycling options and expanding on their recycling pilot program from last year. We should have some information to share about that come next meeting because we're scheduling a couple of meetings about that in the coming weeks.
Thank you. Board responses.
Well, thank you all. I wonder if we can have Zach to update about the internet issue at LACS? Or did the technology department receive any information about that? Hate to put you on the spot, but it's, we are not in the trenches like this, so know the details.
Sure. So there's two issues here that have come up. Over the summer, we changed internet filtering providers. The last week or so, there's actually messaging that went out to students about how and what requests you can put in. So our team has been working through those requests as they're coming in. This is a sort of what we'd call, you know, it's a, the switch was in response to requests from a lot of teachers, some students, and also caregivers about having a different system. But anytime you move systems over, there's thousands of rules and sort of setups that have to be figured out. So this is a growing pain of that. So I would encourage all students who are trying to access specific materials to review their emails, and there's some protocols for that. As to internet issues, I believe we've been in email communication, and there's also mechanisms for how we can troubleshoot those. So working with your libraries and submitting tickets are the best way to do that. We have a really strong technology team and staff that will go to our buildings daily. So again, if you're having internet issues, the best thing you could do is please put in a ticket. If you're finding that those tickets and working with your library staff are not being addressed, please let us know. But we have a, we have a system for it. Our team gets like 21,000 to 25,000 tickets a year, and we close most of them within one or two business days. So we're really more than happy to come consult. If you have the information and the problem, please let us know. We're happy to respond.
Thank you. So and were you aware of the system to, to go to the library?
I know. I've talked to our principal a few times, and it's been a general concern among the student body. And I don't know, you know, how far she's going, and some students have made complaints.
Do you know, because I know we've emailed, have you put in a ticket to follow up on those concerns?
I have.
Okay. Yes, please do, because we're more than happy to solve those problems and work with you all. I know you've worked with our team before. We're happy to support that. And if there's a need, we'll, we'll do it. And I'll come by tomorrow. We can chat. Great.
Okay, thank you. And with regard to the bus delays, I'm not sure if you checked on the, what is the new bus transportation tracking device that families have, Stop Finder, to just see where the buses are located. But thank you, Emily, for stating that your interest in knowing more about the Transportation Department. Because I remember years ago, there was a group of students who went to the Transportation Department and had an aha moment once they realized exactly what happened, that it's not just delay in in different, so many different moving parts. And it's just to understand that our drivers are definitely doing the best that they can, but how do we rectify that? So understanding things as you are willing to do from the ground up, maybe we could get a student group to go to the Transportation Department again. Because even as we near the winter months and knowing what takes place if there's a possible snow day and at what time the bus drivers get out and everything like that. So, thank you.
I want to applaud your data keeping. That's, 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 I mean, it sounds to me as if there's a positive trend. At one point, you were telling us about 30-minute, 35-minute waits, and you're down to 15 now, which is still not good enough, but, so yeah, keep up the good work.
It's very different every day, and different costumes as well, so it's a lot.
So on that note, also tonight, we're going to have a transportation update. So maybe some of those things will be addressed in that update, or at least, you know, we can start talking about that. I'm also interested in the newsletter that you guys are sending out to the students. So you, you know, feel free to copy board members on that. I'd love to read it personally.
We've also been writing updates in the Tatler to try to reach a wider audience of staff as well and emailing the list out to staff or the update out to staff. So we can definitely CC you guys on it if you'd like.
I'd like to challenge you with that newsletter that you said about students who are put in inappropriate items into the toilets, right? Have you connected with students to find out why they're doing that or get their feedback as to what needs to be rectified and all?
I mean, we just started with the newsletter, so that's definitely something to consider. This is my theory. It's not substantiated. But I will say that my theory is that the people responding to our surveys will generally not be the ones shoving vapes down toilets. I think that's a pretty safe bet. So I'm not sure how much accurate data we'll be able to get about from the perspective of students who are doing such things. My personal opinion is that it's just another example of convenience over respect, which seems to be a recurring theme, I think, amongst high scores of every generation. But, you know, if it's easier to do X, but not necessarily better for the school environment, I think there's a subset of our population which will always choose to do X simply because it's easier, rather than doing Y, which might take you two extra minutes. But that's definitely something we can pursue and try to see if somehow we can manage to get respondents who are engaging in these activities.
Well, thank you for all the comments, and I just want to note that I really appreciate the invitation and the sharing about the, about LACS's open house on Thursday. And to just note that we, as a board, have all received invitations from the IHS principal to come to their open house on Thursday. So just want to kind of note it for you all because it sounds really interesting, and I would love to have another opportunity to come to the school and maybe there can be some coordination next year to try to see if they can be on different days.
Okay, well, thank you. If there's no other comments, can move on to our next item of business, which is item 4.1, which is the approval of the consent agenda, and happy to accept motions.
I move that we approve all consent agenda items listed in the consent agenda, personnel report, and minutes of the previous meeting as presented.
Second.
Moved by Jill and second by Emily. Any comments?
Any discussion?
Any discussion? You can comment, you can discuss, you can state. Okay, then hearing none, we can, we can take a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Okay, the motion passes, six, nothing. That takes us to item seven of our agenda, which is the superintendent report with Dr. Brown.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity, Dr. Grant Wyers. It's good to see you all. Just one item this evening, I wish to highlight that our ICSD Insider has been published. Last week it was published. It goes out to a very, very broad audience. And if we can get it up here, I will highlight that the first section is all about budget and long-range fiscal planning and alerting our community and others to the fact that we have already started that process. And there's also a survey that's embedded in the Insider that we want folks to take that gives us some information about how folks wish to engage with the budget process, how you want to learn more, what type of communication you need, what works best for you. So again, we do this annually, but this year, I would love to just highlight the fact that we're doing. I was on the radio this morning, making sure folks knew that we have already started that process. And I actually noted some of the challenges that we and other districts are going to be facing this year and going forward. Again, thank you to our communications team and all the folks who are sending us a significant amount of content that's populating our Insider because I think it's a best-in-class example. And I'm hoping that Catherine Senera's article is in there too somewhere. Maybe that was a staff update. But also look for special accolades and commendations for members of our team, including Catherine Senera, who was recognized as one of the top leaders in our state. And the article that highlights her accomplishments, oh, there's Professor Bradwell. We talked about him at the last meeting. So again, it's another opportunity to highlight folks like Catherine and like Sean who are receiving statewide recognitions. So again, if you, I think most folks just get this automatically, communication team. But if you aren't getting it and wish to get it, please send us a note, and we'll add you to the distribution list. Thank you for the opportunity. Let's do some questions for me.
Thank you for sharing. I am curious, like, how often that email list gets updated or reviewed and how, like, new families are made aware of it? And related to that, if there are individuals around, like, principals sharing it out to their, to their individual schools?
Got you. And correct me if I'm wrong. We're connected to our, our information management system. So we get parent emails and other emails from our school tool system. So the information is already there, and if you're already in there, you can get it. You can opt in in other ways. You can send an email. I'm almost certain that most of our principals, and that correct me if I'm wrong, may send out a link to our newsletters in their newsletters. It's on our website as well. So I'm thinking about other things. Am I leaving out anything, Katie? Social media? Yeah, it's on our Instagram and Facebook feeds as well.
But just to clarify, it's an opt-in, like, you have to opt in in order to receive it?
No, if you're in our system, you get it automatically. But we've had hundreds of community members who are not connected to the Ithaca City School District through kids who want to get it, so they have to opt in.
Excellent. Thank you.
And if there's suggestions on how to get, it's such a cool newsletter. I wanted to get out as much as possible. So if you have suggestions, please let us know.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So now we're going to be moving on to some school district business, and we have a few different items tonight. And our first item, item 8.1 is a transportation update with Bob Van Karen. And Chris, come on down.
While these guys are setting up, I just want to note publicly my appreciation for both gentlemen, particularly Chris. Chris and I oftentimes talk at 3:00, 4:00 AM, beginning next month through April in this town. So anyway, Chris is always up, and he always has an answer about whether or not we should be going to school or should not. And I just want to appreciate you for that because that's 24/7, year-round. And I know you have a team that's out there even before you. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Thanks, everybody. It's our pleasure to be here tonight to give a little update on the Transportation Department. My name's Bob Van Karen. I'm associated with the Human Resources. But tonight, I'm here in my capacity as the interim director of Transportation. Of course, I too want to thank Chris Hortzman, who's the transportation specialist, emphasis on the specialists down there. Without Chris, the operation doesn't run smoothly. And I really thank you for stepping up and doing a fantastic job. I also want to thank some other folks down at Transportation, including the office staff. Couple of are here tonight. Jerome and Sean are here tonight representing the office staff. As Karen alluded to, if you've had the opportunity to be in the office when our buses are out on their routes, it's like, I guess it's akin to like an air traffic control center. There is a lot of stuff going on, and the folks down there are handling it with professionalism and efficiency. That's really, really impressive. Also, of course, want to thank our drivers and bus aides who transport over 3,500 students every day safely and efficiently. And it's not a perfect situation, and I appreciate so much. LACS will kind of start with that tonight. But I also be remiss if I didn't give a very big shout out to our mechanics. Our buses are on the road over one and a half million miles a year, and our mechanics are consistently rated in top tier for safety and efficiency and the DOT inspections. And a portion of our fleet is inspected every week. So it's an ongoing continual process, and they're consistently in the top tier. So thank you to everybody. And I say that I started with the thank yous because a lot of these folks are going to bed very, very soon, right? Because they're up at 4:30 in the morning, getting ready to come to work. And maybe, you know, again, we, we always want to improve, and there are areas where we're looking to improve. The history with LACS has been a long one and ongoing. And I think I'd like to start also with thank you to LACS principal and administrative staff, your office staff, in particular, your students who have helped us learn and grow and give, hopefully, present to LACS what they need. And I'm going to turn it over to Chris because he is the expert here. And maybe just start with LACS, and then we can jump into, into the presentation.
All right, so for those that don't know me, thank you for the introduction. I've spent 13 years at Ithaca City School District transporting students, and I've always made it my mission to make sure that those students got to school on time, safely, every single time. And I can almost remember all the students that I've transported over the years. I've driven almost every student that's been here, every single route that's been here in Ithaca. I've driven it at least once. LACS, starting with them is very important. I'm always up for a challenge, and getting students to LACS on time has been a challenge. That's, that's no secret. But we want to take that challenge head-on, myself, my office staff, and LACS as well. And as late as today, we were sent a list of 15 students that are, that are late to school every day. We took those 15 students and broke it down to the molecular level to find out why they're late, what routes they're riding on, are they routed, what time they're getting to the shuttles at IHS, and how can we improve tomorrow? Out of those, we only have two left that we can't find a solution for. We will work tomorrow morning on that solution. The day ran away from us, and we had to get here. So 13 out of those 15 students should see improvements immediately. The two that we don't, we will work on solutions and have one by Friday, I'm sure of it. Even though those solutions are there, there's still going to be complexities. A bus runs late, an accident on the road, weather's coming. Things happen. We may have to shift and evolve, and we've learned that with LACS continuously, that we have to shift and evolve for whatever need happens. Whatever need happens at IHS where the traffic is stuck, where we're waiting to get out of IHS for an extended period of time, which then adds five minutes. And we found out exactly how many minutes down to the second it takes to get from the tennis courts to LACS's campus, the fastest route we can get there. And we know that we don't have many seconds to spare to do it on time. So we will continue to do better for LACS. So as I was building this presentation, I wanted to touch on some pieces and some, some data. I think people like data and they like numbers, so that's where I'm going to start off with. Maybe, do I have to use that? All right, there we go. So I want to talk about transportation data at a glance. And the first thing we're going to talk about is the routes. I think that's important to know, what we have. We have 61 complete routes. A route is a combination of between two and six trips. So a route gets broken down. That breaks down to 267 total trips in our district. 267 trips makes up our students going to where they need to go daily. That's encompassed within, in all the route totals. Further broken down, we have 36 auxiliary trips, which are midday routes, students that need to go home early, pre-K routes, which need to go home early, late runs that go home late, and then other stuff as well. Of the 13 late runs that we have, they're serviced out of DeWitt, Boynton, LACS. Of the thirteen late runs that we have, they're serviced out of DeWitt, Boynton, LACS, New Roots and IHS. And late runs leave starting at four thirty. All the way up till five o'clock out of New Roots. On average, and this was just last week. We travel six thousand four hundred and thirteen miles average daily. That equates broken down to eighty four miles as the average daily total per route. We over the year travel one point one, one point five million miles every single year. And that, if we look back over the last five years, that's, that's pretty standard. It fluctuates slightly, but it goes up slightly every year. All right. This is a snapshot. This was, this is a picture of one trip. A trip out of a school early in the morning. If you can see, does this laser work? No? All right. The laser don't work. I'm going to point. Up there on the top left. You have the park garage. This route leaves the garage at six oh two AM. Its first pickup is at six twenty seven AM, nine point nine eight miles to the first pickup. It takes twenty minutes to get from the bus garage to the first stop. This route is forty three point one three miles long. It has twenty seven stops and picks up forty five students to get them to their elementary on time. Down in the bottom right hand corner, if you could see the darker gray or however it's showing up. That is actually Tioga County. That is another entire county that we travel into. In just one of many areas that we travel outside of our hundred and fifty five square miles. This is one of our longer routes. But we make sure that we try to do this as efficiently as possible and get the students to school on time. Next. This is all the routes for that. This is all the trips for that school in that morning. If you could see how many trips there are, there are six trips that go to that school. And they're strategically placed so that they are trying to be as efficient as possible to get the students to school on time with as least amount of overlap as possible. In the areas where there are overlap, there's also a lot of students in that area. This school has over three hundred students that are riding the bus each morning.
Hey Chris, this is, that is one route.
This, this is six trips. Six trips. They are going to an elementary South Hill as a matter of fact. The one trip was the first one that I showed you. This is the sixth that serviced that school in the morning. That represent over three hundred students and over fifty square miles. So the next after the routes, we couldn't do the routes without these folks. These folks are very important. Currently, we have update today, fifty nine active nineteen A school bus drivers. Ten active standby school bus drivers. Three office staff that are on the roster. Three mechanics on the nineteen A roster. Six, five school bus trainees because one of them became a school bus driver today. And we have two pending school bus driver trainees at the board approval level. And we have two substitute drivers.
So one of, one of the, just one of the things to mention on this particular thing is when we say the office staff and mechanics are on the nineteen A roster, there are times when sickness may hit the, uh, hit the bus drivers, flu, COVID, whatever. And we're down a lot of drivers. We pull from office staff and then mechanics. So there are often times when the work, work is not being done in the mechanics, uh, uh, area because they're out on the road or the office staff is out on the road and Chris is left alone. Sometimes to answer all the phones and do the air traffic controlling that I referenced. So that's, that's an important distinction too.
Also, there's instances of emergency situations that come up. And I may have to go to that situation to help the driver, help the aide, make sure that the student's supported, whatever it may be, and also to assess the situation. So driving is all encompassing for anyone that, that works in the office with me. Oh, you went to the next. That's confusing. So with the drivers and the routes, we have special circumstances. And special circumstances are the things that are the hardest to talk about, but they happen daily. We have one hundred and fifty McKenney Vento students and that can be in any district in anywhere. And McKenney Vento is extremely important because we want to make sure that we support every single student in our district, in our community. And out of those one hundred and fifty, we have thirty McKenney Vento students that have extensive routing that where I sit up at night and I think about, I want to get that student to school on time. And I want them to have the least disruptive transportation experience that they can have. And we, we may spend hours thinking about it, tossing ideas back and forth. How to get that student to school on time from wherever they are in our district. We then have two hundred and twenty six pre-K students. Pre-K students are unique. They're our most vulnerable. They're our youngest populace. And they go to school. Sometimes they have to get out early at twelve forty five. They get out at ten thirty on Fridays. They can be anywhere in the district, going to any one of the number of elementary schools outside of Northeast. Northeast does not have pre-K. All the rest of them do.
Maybe I just a quick explanation for McKenney Vento for folks that don't know. These are students who are, who are housing displaced. They might be temporarily evicted from their housing. Some, sometimes they might have to fires, whatever, right? They, they, uh, and some instances they move to other districts. That's where Chris was mentioning other districts. So you could have a McKenney Vento student who goes to school in ICSD temporarily housed in Newfield, for example. And so some McKenney Vento students is actually one driver going to Newfield to pick them up and bring them to school. And, um, that's part of, part of our job and we're happy to do that and help assist the students in their time of needs.
Thank you. Up to fifty miles from their homeschool. Up to fifty miles so that you could imagine what fifty miles away from a school looks like. We, we have the obligation and, um, responsibility to transport them and we do it gladly. Outside of the, the pre-K students, the next thing that, that I was looking at is our field trips. To date, that is to this week, we've had a hundred and seventy two field trips to date. That's sports, academic, elementary trips, trips for all schools from elementary to middle school to high school. We average over a thousand field trips per school year, over a thousand. So far to date, we've had sixteen weekend field trips, academic or sports. And that, that only goes up as the season goes on. A lot of indoor sports haven't fully started and academic, um, stuff hasn't really taken off yet. That's our winter stuff and into spring. So the weekend trips will certainly go over. We average over a hundred weekend trips per school year. And also one of the things that became apparent this last week is ICSD holidays versus observation by satellite locations. So ICSD was shut down last Thursday. We still had eleven routes that went out. We transport students to other, you know, private schools outside of Ithaca. So we still had staff coming in and transporting a little over two hundred students that day to other schools. We were talking about the Stop Finder app, the Stop Finder features that we, um, are going out. Thank you to ICSD Communications for sending out an amazing letter showing the dates that all of the routes would be sent out. And we're trying to hold true to that, to those dates. Those dates have been sent out to all parents so they know what date their route will be sent out as an invite. All invites will be sent out by Halloween. And we will then resend an invite before November fourteenth for those that have not signed up yet. We're working to make sure that we watch the signup rate. We can watch the people that are going on there and actually using it to see where we need to focus and what we need to do to get it to work more in the future. We also want to continue to add features for it, you know, as we go along. Because I think it can be a good thing for parents to be able to see that the bus is five minutes away or that it's coming around the block. And, um, not have to be out in the cold as we are coming into cold months. Electric bus usage. So currently we have five electric buses at Transportation. All five of those buses are assigned to routes. The routes that I have listed here are routes that we have deemed that they are within mileage range. That they should work all year. We have two additional electric buses coming in the next couple of months. We should take delivery of them. I believe I was told around Thanksgiving. Our current electric buses in the current season are getting roughly a hundred miles to a full charge. With colder months coming, the mileage will be reduced to sixty miles roughly, right around sixty per full charge. We know that. It's our second season into it. So we have, we're still learning as we are going along. We're following the data of it. But we do know what they were getting last year. All we can hope for is a very mild winter with not two cold attempts.
No.
No, no snow, no snow, no snow and warm temps. Both things. So that's, that's what I have from ICSD Transportation's update. I could have like hours more, but we want to go to bed soon.
Thank you.
Thank you. I had just one or two quick questions, if that's okay, just out of curiosity based on the presentation. So first, we mentioned that there was a, you mentioned there was a bus garage up near Buttermilk Balls, I think it was. Do we have multiple bus garages? So why, out of curiosity, why is it so far out? Cause it seems like if it were more centralized, maybe bus routes would be shorter.
That's, that's always been a topic of discussion of where to have the bus garage. So the bus garage was built there in nineteen sixty seven and it's been there ever since. Was it standard? Was it located generally where it was close to other things? Maybe back then? We do know that part of the district is over by the bus garage and then other parts aren't. To have it exactly like probably right in the middle of our district, it would have to be right downtown. And I don't know as if we are going to be able to place one at the down, anywhere downtown. So I'm not sure where else would be central. If we moved it to Danby, other places would have a longer ride or Caroline, other places would have a longer ride. It, it is a complex situation where the location is.
Okay, thank you. And then one more question. I noticed we give late bus routes to New Roots. So out of curiosity, as far as I know, New Roots is not officially a part of the district, but I know that we have relationships with New Roots. Why exactly do we do busing for them?
Legally, uh, school districts have to bus for private, uh, schools, parochial schools. It was a court case that went up, I don't know, maybe forty years ago. So we provide the busing for multiple schools that are not affiliated with ICSD.
Outside of New Roots, what other schools?
Chris, you could name them. So we have North Spencer Christian Academy, Willow Glen. We have GST BOCs. We have Racker Center. We have Blue Sky. We have a lot of other places that we probably go to as well. We're actually transport to Rochester right now. Thank you. I almost forgot that one. Hillside in Rochester. Um, and that fluctuates. We go to Montessori, Elizabeth Ann Clune Montessori out in Danby. We go to Ithaca Waldorf. We go to Namaste out in Jacksonville. George Junior Republic in Dryden. I think that's it.
I'm not going to challenge you.
There might be one more.
Okay. Wow. That's a long list. Thank you.
One, one, one question. It's the same. I asked this question last year. I'm going to repeat it just cause I, um, I live very close to LACS and so I see the buses in the morning going to and from the depot. And it strikes me that there's two bottlenecks. One is crossing the rail line, you know, to stop and open the doors. I'm sure you're very aware. And then coming back to the depot, making the left on thirteen A. The, the buses often back up past the turn lane all the way down to thirteen. I mean, it's, it's, so on both, on both those instances, if there's any ability and probably the answer is no, but if there was any ability for us to have, uh, some kind of thicker or some way to expedite getting across the rail line or some way to eliminate the door opening. And then on the way back, a way to make that left turn on the thirteen A to the depot longer. There's probably not, but it seems like both of those things would help us.
So there is actually an active program that is being worked on through TCAT, the school district and the city of Ithaca to have faster lights for school buses, firefighters, TCATS, stuff of that nature to get them through those type of bottlenecks faster. It's still being worked on right now. And it has not been brought, like the physical equipment has not been brought yet, but it is, uh, nearing that stage.
Oh, that is wonderful news.
Yeah, that'll help a lot. It won't help with the, with the railroad tracks, but.
Wait, help with the light?
We're also working with the Secret Service. We'll figure it out.
I, do those schools reimburse us for busing or are we just required by law to do it for free?
My, my answer is no, but I could be wrong. I don't think there's any reimbursement. I'm looking towards, for private schools, private schools that we bus for. No.
Okay. Um, how long does it take to fully charge an electric bus?
Depends what the, what it is from is lowest range with a DC level two charger, um, fully depleted back up to full.
Fourteen, yeah, I was going to say.
Fourteen hours.
So, so really a bus can only do one small route. That's it.
The routes that we put these buses on are indicative to like being able to do it with the charge in between in the midday. Not fully depleting it in the morning and being able to go out in the afternoon at seventy five percent or eighty percent and still make it back.
And, and they're limited to a, to a hundred miles basically for a full charge.
With current temps.
If it's warm.
If it's warm. And then sixty miles in the winter, which is, is nothing because I mean, you were saying for the first, I mean, just for context, the first pickup for that first route, it took nine point one miles just to get to the first pickup. And then, you know, nine point, so you've got, you know, eighteen miles before you even pick up a kid. That leaves you with, you know, approximately forty two miles of actually picking people up. I mean, that just seems completely inefficient, but just wanted.
There's some things going on too. You know, the buses do come back after their morning route. And so there's time to charge them up. Eventually we'll have, uh, level three chargers, which will really push electricity into them much faster. Right now we have level two. And even with level two, they had to be throttled back because the amount of electricity at the Boswick site is not, uh, capable of pushing enough electricity into them. What, what happens is they'll come back, they'll get some juice put in them. They won't go out again at a hundred percent, but they'll go out with enough juice to finish the second, uh, to the PM route. And you're right though, we're going to reach a point under current battery technology where the, a number of our routes, we, we estimate right now under current technology remind me that maybe a third of our routes will, will.
What was the number? Less than a third?
So again, we're really, we're really starting to think more about that as we, as we do in the facilities and finance.
And, and can you guarantee that it'll only be a third? That we couldn't service? Or do you think that it would be more than that?
Under current technology, yeah, we, I think it's a little too early for us. We're going into our second winter and that's really the key. We're going into our second winter. So we're going to learn a lot more this year. And, um, again, it will be better with the level three chargers, but they're a couple of years out too. So.
And, and what, what's the average charge time for a level three charger? So it's, you said it's fourteen hours or sixteen hours to.
Yeah. To go to full charge on these, on these batteries, um, they charge up quick, but to get the final fifteen, twenty percent of charge, it takes much longer. Someone has, uh, described it as like people flowing into a theater. Most of the people find their seats quickly, but then after a while, you know, the electrical charge is trying to find a seat within the battery to, to take its place. So it takes longer as it goes up. But not all buses need to be fully charged to go out on their routes. And that's where the math comes in.
Do we know what the average charge time is for the?
For the level three? Four to six hours?
Four to six hours.
Yeah. And we'll have more discussions, obviously, Todd, on electric vehicles. Right now, the way the transformer looks for the capital project out at Boswick, it's, it's two to some, some folks are thinking three years out. And we, with the two electric buses that are coming by Thanksgiving, we will essentially have all the buses matched with a charger. Right? If we get another bus, it would have to be. Right? If we get another bus, it would have to be charged either Enfield or Caroline, which for, for various reasons, we're not, we're not happy with, so we're not necessarily going to order any more buses after the two that are coming, so we'll have just enough chargers for the buses. And then, you know, the board will have to make some decisions as to whether we push forward over the next few years with full electrification, what that looks like. Will we do part propane, part uh electric? So more to come on those issues.
Um, I, I had one follow-up question, like a, after just the, the normal buses finish the trip, do they go back to the terminal? And I apologize for not knowing this stuff, but like, where do they gas up?
All of the uh gas buses and diesel buses fuel up at Boswick Road.
Okay.
The propane buses fuel up at Airheart Energy, which is on thirty, thirteen, thirty-four B, whatever it is over there. Um, which is not far from Boswick Road, but everyone ends up back at Boswick Road.
Have you guys ever done any sort of analysis to determine like, I mean, you, you use this one example, I mean, I, I calculated they're wasting sixteen thousand miles a year just before they get to their first stop, you know, and that, that doesn't even include having to go back, gas up, go back to the stop, so it's probably, you know, exponentially higher than that. Like, w- w- would there be an option of like saying like, okay, if we strategically put fuel stations for certain routes in certain locations, we could save hundreds of thousands of miles a year, you know, and then try to figure out like what the cost savings would be for that. I'm just curious if that's ever something you guys have explored or?
No. There's a, having the buses in one central location is beneficial for breakdowns, uh problems in the morning. Uh preventative maintenance, also making sure that the drivers all check in. You know, making sure they check in at one central location, making sure that nothing fell through the cracks of, did this driver come to work? You know, did the bus start? Were there any issues with the bus out? Um, so we, we have talked about buses being either in Caroline or Enfield, and we worry, we don't want any, um, you know, missed routes.
Yeah, I'm just curious about like a fueling state, like if you had one like up near Lansing and one like up near Caroline and like, could that potentially save? I don't know, hundred thousand miles per year when you start to extrapolate that out over all the different routes and um, I, I'm just curious, you know, because I, I'm just, it's interesting to hear like the amount of miles that just get wasted, just trying to get to like where we actually need to be functioning, so.
And Mr. Fox, I'm, I'm thinking about the ma, the costs associated with maintenance of a new site and the administrative overhead. Um, but probably more than the savings on gasoline.
Yeah.
As I'm hearing you ask the question, but I don't know, we haven't done that analysis. Um, so that would be something we can look at.
I'd like to just interject, um, and correct if I'm mixing my facts up, but I, I asked, so Tatum had a report on the new bus depot, and I asked him this exact question, and they said they had runs and bumpers and had come back that, you know, my question was, do you build one new big bus depot or three small ones? And they said the answer is one big one, but I, it may be remembering incorrectly, but I, I think they have both at that.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a good question.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I hope you're getting a sense that we have a large transportation organization here, probably the, if not the largest, one of the largest in Central and Upstate New York. Um, because other folks who have much larger districts are outsourcing this, um, which is something we have never considered doing here. Um, and we have a great team, a lot of employees, uh, a lot of many, many miles and a lot of young people that have served. And frankly, the first people that you see on a given day. Um, so when we hear the term student facing, I can, I continue to push. I don't know of a educator in the school district who's not student facing, especially the folks who sees them first thing in the morning, who are driving a bus. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Okay, our next uh item of business, we're going to have Emily Scheit come down and talk a little bit about our independent audit. Audit committee met last Wednesday, I believe.
Typically, Dwayne is here from Insero to review this audit with the board. Um, we're getting to it a little sooner than we, we expected tonight, so which is a good thing, I suppose. Um, so Dwayne is not here yet. He'll probably come flying through the door when I get done. So, um, so the audit report, uh, there were no, there were no major findings in the audit report. The one finding that was uh recognized was actually the same finding last year and has to do with rollover. Um, it was nothing alarming. It is nothing alarming, and it is just a procedural thing in the computer and how we roll over our POs into the following year. Um, where um it's a whole process. So while it is a finding, it was something that correct, was corrected um on June thirtieth, and it has to do with the capital project and expenditures um being uh set up as a liability on June thirtieth, as if they were expended in the twenty-three, twenty-four, when actually they were carryovers that should be applied to this year. Um, it's work that hasn't happened yet, so it's still encumbered on a PO. Um, I am not someone who was involved in doing this rollover. I will be next year. So I can guarantee that next year I will not be back giving you this same um talk. Um, but it is, it is not, it is just a classifying um situation for the capital project monies. Um, so it is all money that is still encumbered on POs, and it is money that we will eventually be using for these particular vendors in the capital project. It just hadn't been paid for, and it, it is a computer um situation that I will make sure it doesn't happen again next year. But that was the only finding for the uh general fund, which is, which is very good. So it means we did our job correctly. Uh, we ended the year with expenditures at a hundred and fifty-five thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars. Or maybe million, sorry. Yes, one hundred and fifty-five million dollars. That's a big difference. Um, and uh revenues ended at a hundred and fifty-six million dollars, a little bit over. Um, it is a variance of about eight hundred and ninety-six thousand, which is less than we have had in uh prior years. So you can see that that gap is, is starting to narrow, um, which is what we had planned on doing. Um, we end the year with um of the four percent um that we are allowed in the unassigned at three point eight seven. Um, so we are under the four percent, so we are still doing well in that area, and we were able to refund our reserves um that we did use this year, um, which was the um employee retirement reserve, the health insurance reserve and some capital reserve um that we are able to refund from the use of last year. So that is all good, but it wasn't a significant refunding of those uh reserves. So again, tightening it up and we will have more to discuss as we go forward with the budgeting process. Any questions on them? Um, the other part of the uh audit is the uh extra class, and extra class is always a difficult because people are changing every year in the extra class. You have different advisors and you have different students um dealing with it. So it's a learning a learning experience every year, same types of issues, nothing really um extreme that is of any great concern. It's just learning how to record things, put uh receipts in in a timely manner, um, and things like that. So we always meet with the extra class. Um, and they have already been, the audit has already been shared with them, and they will be um giving KIP uh the co, corrective action plan, the cap, um, that will be presenting to the board for approval at a future board meeting from not only the general fund and our position, but also the extra class. Any questions?
Yes, I was going to ask a question about what is, um, what will be the next step towards the extra classroom activities, the recommendation that were made. So you, you stated a correction action plan.
Yes, so whenever there, um, what we do is we have to file the audits with the state. Um, and uh we have to provide them with a letter that tells what we are going to be doing um to correct any of the findings. Um, so, and those all have to be filed with the state. So for the extra class, typically what we will do is meet with the different uh buildings and review the findings and see if we can come up with any ways or answer any questions if there's misunderstanding on how things should be done. And so we'll be meeting with those groups eventually when we have um a little more staffing, maybe in the business office. I can't, I can't say I'm going to run out there tomorrow and meet with these folks, but um in, within the next few months, we will be meeting with them and seeing if we can help support them. But that's typical for every year, every year, and it's typical for every school district to meet with those extra class folks and try to re, reteach them and educate them.
Um, I would move to.
There's some language.
Ah, I would move to accept. Uh, the Board of Education has received and reviewed the independent audit report prepared by the firm of Insero and Company, CPA's LLP, and acceptance of the audit report has been recommended by the Audit Committee. Now, be it resolved that the Board of Education accepts the independent audit report prepared by Insero and Company, CPA's LLP for the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four fiscal year ended June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four.
Okay, moved by Jill, seconded by Emily. Any discussion?
Well, I have a question. So now that, once we vote on it, then it would be dated, because they're not dated.
No, this is still a draft until you.
Until we vote on it, the vote, we, the day we vote is what the date goes on. Okay, all right.
Additional discussion? Okay, and we can call to a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. I just, uh, just from the finance committee perspective, I just want to remind the board and everyone that the, the leadership team is down some key people, and so burden across the entire leadership team has increased, but especially in finance. I just want to say thank you for stepping up. I know you're, you're wearing a lot of shoes, and we very much appreciate it.
Okay, we have um a few more items of business for tonight, moving on to item eight point three. Um, this is the second reading and adoption of policy two, three, two, four.
Motion to approve policy two, three, two, four, agenda preparation and dissemination for second reading and adoption.
Moved by Jill, seconded by Emily. Discussion. All right, no discussion. I had a chance to read it, but looked fine to me. I see that nobody uh has any discussion or commentary, so we could um move it to a vote. Um, all in favor of adopting said policy? Any opposed? No abstentions? Then the motion passes unanimously. And we can move on to item eight point four. Um, eight point four, we, was just a, a question slash discussion um in the Policy Committee. Uh, one of the committees we have is a board. We only have two members on the Policy Committee. And so there was a question about whether as a board, we felt strongly about having a third person on that committee, or if we were only going to have two people on the committee, or if people don't have a strong opinion about that, and maybe Emily, I don't know, since you're the person here who is on the committee, if you have anything you'd like to say about it in terms of any discussion or any uh opinions or et cetera. No?
You, oh, you don't, I was waiting to see if anybody wanted to share. Um.
Yeah.
Um, I don't, I don't have strong feelings, though, uh Sean and I acknowledged in the last meeting that should there ever be a vote for something, having two people voting would uh easily produce a tie if we were um in disagreement about the outcome. And so having a third person on the committee could be helpful um for those unlikely events that that happens. Um, we have a number of people who come to a lot of the committee meetings anyway. Um, and so I, I feel like if they're sitting off as a noncommittee member versus being on the committee, it'd probably be worthwhile naming somebody to be on it.
Mm-hmm, okay. Um, okay, any other uh comments about that or thoughts about it by other board members? Okay, I think if anybody um is interested in um participating on that committee, you just let me know, Sean know, and we can uh have a conversation about potentially adding a third person to be on that committee.
Great.
Uh, which takes us to our last item, um, which is a resolution to ratify an agreement, and I'll accept motions.
Motion to ratify an agreement between the district and the Tompkins Seneca Tyoga Schools Health Insurance Cooperative.
Second.
Okay, moved by Jill, seconded by Emily. Uh, any board discussion? Okay, then we can take that to a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so the motion passes five, zero, one. Um, okay, and that just takes us to other business. Um, some upcoming dates of importance, just to announce, uh, we'll be having a facilities and finance committee meeting, I believe is, is next week, uh, next Tuesday, the fifteenth. Um, and those committee meetings begin at uh four forty-five, right? Four forty-five for facilities, and finance starts at six or six fifteen? Anybody know offhand? Okay, six o'clock for finance. Um, so we have those two committees next week. Um, as we talked about, we also have the IHS and the LACS Open House, uh, which is coming up next Thursday. I think it's this Thursday, this Thursday, this Thursday, sorry. This Thursday, I think it's five thirty to seven thirty, is that correct? Hmm, or thereabouts. Okay, let me see some nodding of heads. Okay, so five thirty to seven thirty, we'll have those, uh, those two open houses. Um, whether.
There's a different time for LACS.
Oh, five forty-five to seven fifteen, okay. LACS five forty-five to seven fifteen, Ithaca High School, uh, five thirty to seven thirty. Um, both this coming Thursday. Yep, and uh Board of Education members will be um in the activity area, so uh, some of us will be there, and you can uh come and meet and greet, ask questions of us, among other groups that'll be at that uh Activity Center. Um, Advisory Council, thank you so much, is going to be uh this Thursday. We have uh two Advisory Councils. Um, we have our Revenue Exploration Committee, which is going to be meeting at uh four thirty. And then we have, what's?
Legislative advocacy.
At five thirty.
Five thirty.
Okay, so those, we have our two advocacy committees meeting also this week. Uh, any other dates of importance? I think that's probably everything. Um, any other discussion items from board members for tonight? Okay, then hearing none, we can adjourn our meeting for tonight. Thank you so much for coming. And uh our next full board meeting will, uh, voting meeting will be in two weeks. Thank you.